Good afternoon, everyone. I apologize for being a minute late. We're going to get started. So, good afternoon. Are we ready with the, um? Shanita, are we ready? Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Deion Bussie-Reader. I'm the Chair of the DC Housing Authority. And we will begin. I'm calling to order our emergency board meeting Thursday, January 27 at 1:02 PM. As you all know, you all have been, all board members have been given your information on the diligent board. This is an emergency meeting that we are hosting today. And we're going to get right into the agenda.
Chair, I think we need to count four on. Let Hammer's going to do a roll call, Chairwoman.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Present.
Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Skinner.
Here.
Commissioner Slover. Commissioner Slover. Commissioner Strickland.
Present.
Commissioner Talafaro. Commissioner Talafaro is absent. Commissioner Van Goshry. Commissioner Van Goshry is absent. Chair Bussie-Reader.
Present.
Commissioner Council. Commissioner Felchikio.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First, we'll have the approval of the minutes. It's in your diligent board of January 12th Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm hoping all of you had an opportunity to read the minutes. Do you have any corrections on the minutes? Commissioners? Bearing none, we can take a vote to accept the minutes as written.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. You could do a roll call. I'm sorry, who's supporting us, Shanita? I apologize.
It's not a problem. Hammer Gabries is actually supporting this meeting.
Thank you, Hammer. I appreciate you. Thank you so very much. Please, if you could do a roll call again, please.
Sure. Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Skinner.
Yes.
Commissioner Slover. Commissioner Strickland. Commissioner Strickland. We'll come back.
Hear you.
Commissioner Talafaro. Commissioner Van Goshry. Chair Bussie-Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Council. Commissioner Felchikio.
Yes.
And Commissioner Harris.
Present.
So you have a quorum. We have Commissioner Ortiz, Slover, Talafaro, and Van Goshry are absent. All others.
Yeah, we can accept the minutes as written. The minutes have been approved. Thank you so very much, Hammer. All right, we're going to move to our resolutions. I'm going to turn it over to our Executive Director. Director Donald, please present the resolutions.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to remind everyone the reason for this meeting. This meeting is considered an emergency meeting because it is off-cycle from our regular board meetings, and that is how meetings off-cycle are designated. We, um, I think we would prefer to call it a special meeting, and the reason that we asked the board to hold this meeting is because we have three issues that are time-sensitive. Our staff has done an extraordinary job over the last few weeks to prepare, to get all of the materials together, to prepare the board, to submit those materials well in advance, and to also socialize and share them with members of our constituency groups, our residents, and the neighboring community relative to one of the items. So, in that vein, um, to the Commissioners, Madam Chair, it's been really disheartening that that some members of the board have wanted to cancel this meeting on largely procedural grounds. Um, I know that there are times that we don't cross all of the Ts and dot all of the Is. I believe we did that this time, and we did that in a very time-sensitive period when we are preparing for oversight hearings, when we're preparing for an extensive HUD review, and doing all of the other work of this agency. And to be able to pull together these materials, to do briefings to individual board members, and I personally did to our new board members, as well as to have meetings with our resident council presidents, our citywide advisory group, two meetings with resident councils of the neighboring communities across from our headquarters. I think it's just, it was yeoman's work, and I think I'm very proud of the staff for having done that. In addition, we had to respond to attempts to question whether or not we did proper notice for these meetings, which we did, as we have been advised, as is required. Clearly, members of the public are aware of this meeting because they've signed up to testify. We're not trying to have an emergency meeting that we're pushing down the throats of anybody. We're very transparent about this. And in all candor, and I never say this, but in all candor, several of the items that are before the board are items that should have been handled by the previous administration, and it's part of the ongoing effort that I have inherited to move things forward, and that is my responsibility. And when I'm aware of those things, then I take action and bring it to the board as is appropriate, and that is why we are here today. These items are very important. They are three, um, three resolutions that we have before the board. One has to do with the resident Commissioners' election process, which we have briefed the board and members of the community on several times. This election should have been put in place and conducted last summer. It was not, and we have had to scramble to back into it and to make sure that we have an election that meets all of the requirements, and that is done with integrity and in accordance to all of the rules. Some of those rules have not been adhered to before. Under my watch, we will make sure that we abide by the rules as we understand them. And so, one item that we're coming to the board for is for the board to consider the question of the number of signatures required for Commissioners to qualify for the ballot. We do have our representatives here from Resident Participation Services, which is the independent third-party monitor, and they've made a recommendation that I concur with, and we'll discuss that when that resolution is introduced. The other two resolutions are related. One is amendment to our MTW plan. Again, it's off-cycle, and it's, um, the reason that we are coming mid-year to make amendments is because we have some opportunities, and we will go through each of those four issues that are contained in the amendment, again, which we have circulated both in term, in, um, briefing decks, in resolutions, and in background memos. We will walk through those. The staff will walk through those. And then, the final resolution is to, is to re, to authorize the agency to request a demo DPO for a headquarters project, which has been stagnant for a long time, allows us to move that forward. So we, these items that we are bringing before the board are very important. They are time-sensitive, and we need to move forward, and that is the purpose of this meeting today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director Donald. And I, first of all, let me apologize to you on behalf of the Commissioners. You're absolutely right. Everything was sent out in a timely manner, and we appreciate the work that you all are doing. And I want you all to know that from all of us, and we know that you resumed a lot. A lot was, was actually given to you based on what you had to receive with this organization, and we appreciate the work that you and your team are doing to turn things around. So I need to say that on behalf of all of us. So next, we're actually going to move to public comment on resolutions, and I just want to remind my Commissioners of the five-round conversations that we're having, so we can make sure that we give the public an opportunity to make comments and move these resolutions forward if possible. So now, again, I believe, Hammer, you, you got something to help me out with?
Yes, absolutely. Our first, our first is Karen Settles.
Is it Settles?
I think she's muted, but she is on the line.
I see. All right, please proceed. No problem.
I'm speaking on Resolution 2210. I'd like to say we are not in support of the process for the Commissioners' election due to the current pandemic slash health emergency. I'd like to elaborate if I can. I'd like to say that, um, this, this, um, pandemic has thrown a lot of things off. I want to stop and say that I'm very grateful of the hard work that's going on at the Housing Authority. But we all have to look at it the way it is. It is damage control, and we are pretty damaged. And I say that to say we are not in support of this proj, of this, um, process due to the fact that the Housing Authority has stated emergencies on their own behalf many times. But when the residents have something that they have to take and put in as far as an emergency, as far as processes of information, this election, particularly interesting is, is that in this election, we are enforcing signatures. For the last three cycles of Commissioner elections, there has not been a mandate for signatures. That's number one. I realize it's on the books. Number two, we are in a pandemic, and we also had, our mayor has, um, announced the health emergency at the same time when the signatures need to be done and the Housing Authority was closed. I want to wrap it up to say this. If those emergencies, and this, the, the reason that we are here today is, is behind the same type of emergency. Residents have to see the same sensibility and understanding that the Housing Authority gives itself, as well as other city services give themselves. When we have issues that are not resolved, we have too many unanswered questions as it relates to the independent third-party, their enforcement of rules. We had no conversations with them, which is out of the box. When we enforce, we can't be selective at what we enforce. We have to be selective of the whole process. And so, I'm asking that we do a reconsideration because, actually speaking, it's quite embarrassing for me as a resident, and it should be for the Housing Authority, to have an election that only has one person on the ballot and only four people signed up to even be considered. But one person on the ballot, that means that, one, to me, the independent third-party will have an election for one person that qualified, be it whatever category that is. Secondly, does that independent get paid again to have a special election? What sense does that make? And thinking of this pandemic, we need to realize that we have to change some things around. We have the room to do it, and I'm asking for that consideration for that to be done.
Thank you. So, thank you, Ms. Settles. We appreciate your testimony.
Our next speaker is Umar Mushin. I don't see him.
That might be one of the people who are testifying at the City Council.
Yes.
And I thought I would make you aware of that. Thank you.
Right, so if he, if he does join, um, he has signed up, and next would be Ms. Denise Blackson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ms. Blackson.
I'm, um, going to speak on Resolution 2210 as well. I wanted, for the record, to reflect that I'm not in support of the process for the Commissioners' election due to the current pandemic health emergency as well. Duly noted, DCHA sent out notice to residents on all properties, DCHA properties stating their offices were closed through January 31st due to the pandemic. You know, that notice came out around the first week of January. How can DCHA be closed? The office be closed for you to get paperwork done by the management office, and DCHA is not even in the office? Where's the consideration at? Other elections process have been relaxed, from all different, from the council to Commissioners, all types of process have been relaxed. DCHA still expected us to go out into communities without underlying health conditions and with different things going on across the city, including violence in certain areas, and we're expected to go in these very areas and try to get signatures? 200? No consideration in relaxing those signatures? No consideration of getting back to us on January the 17th, as was stated at the January 13th Mission, uh, Commissioners' meeting? That did not happen. Uh, it's just, it's just very funny to piggyback off of what Ms. Settle said. Emergency only works for DCHA when it favors DCHA. The health emergency was extended by our mayor through February the 15th now, but at that time, the health emergency took place as well. And I just want to say I'm not in support of the process. I do not favor how the process went. Not at all. And I want to also say I'm not in support of Resolution 2203 or 22, the, or 20, um, 204, because I don't feel that enough information is given in a timely manner. It's always a rush, rush with DCHA when they're presenting to us. So I don't feel the process has went well on any of the resolutions that are before us today. I want to say it's not enough information to make, for me to make an educated decision in agreeing with any of this. And I just want that for the record, and I thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you, Ms. Blackson. We appreciate that at this time. So now, we've actually heard from the, um, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, there are no other speakers, there are no other speakers signed up for the resolutions.
Okay, so Commissioners, we actually are familiar with the description of this resolution. It's time for us to take action on what we've heard.
Um, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, there's been no presentation.
Presentation on the election?
No, on, on any of the resolutions at this meeting.
Please, Director Donald, you can proceed.
Yeah, a point of order. I believe that it would be appropriate for on the resident Commissioners to be excused from this, voting on this resolution. I believe that was mentioned before since there's a potential conflict, and I know there's only one resident Commissioner who's currently on, but if that's the decision of the board, then, then we should wait to proceed.
Okay, so back to, thank you, um, Director Donald. So Commissioner Hoffman, I'm, I'm confused. You're asking for a presentation? This is, this is the action that we took from the last meeting. You don't recall that we discussed possibly after the residents submitted their names on this 14th? That we will come back and look at. The resolution is in the, in all of our material. It states exactly what we're expecting, if there are going to be any changes based on the public testimony and the residents' concerns. What, what more are you asking for?
I'm asking for a discussion, and on the other two resolutions, there is material to be presented. This is the only public meeting on those two resolutions.
Well, Prisa, I, I believe that the, the Chair is trying to go through this resolution first, especially since Mr. Ca, Mr. Council would have to not be a part of this conversation, and then we can do the other two presentations, but.
Thank you, Rachel. That's exactly right. This is not, we're going to go through the other, the other resolutions, Commissioner Hoffman. But this particular resolution, we need to move on, and we know we're not going to ask Vice Chair Council to vote on this. So we want to have the discussion. You're more than have your five minutes now to discuss any of the concerns, but it's clearly stated in the memorandum, as well in the resolution where we are. I'm just concerned about what presentation. There's no other presentation to, that we're going to provide. So we, if the Commissioners would like to have a discussion, we can do a round like we normally would do. And if there's some concerns around how we want to move forward, or if not, we can take board action.
Madam Chair, we can introduce the resolution and describe what is of the board action.
Please, I'm assuming that would be the presentation.
The point of order was I didn't know if, um, if Commissioner, Vice Chair Council was going to be allowed to participate, to hear the presentation and just not vote. I just, I'm just asking for.
So we're going to allow, Vice Chair, I'm going to allow you to hear the presentation, but you're not going to be able to vote on this particular resolution. Is that fair? Thank you, sir. Andrea, you can move forward with the presentation, please, based on Commissioner Hoffman's description of it.
And we do have the, um, the independent third-party monitor here to either ask questions or to amplify on the purpose of the resolution.
Works for me. Please proceed.
Afternoon, Commissioners and the public. There is a resolution before the Board of Commissioners today regarding the resident Commissioner elections. The elections process began last December, and that process included that anyone who wants to run must obtain signatures, 200 for the senior disabled, 200 for the family, and 300 for the at-large. Uh, the, some of the resident leaders have approached the board regarding, because of the pandemic, either reducing the number of signatures for the two positions where there were not enough people who got signatures. That is for the, um, at-large and for the family. So before the board today, there were enough people, there wasn't one person who obtained enough signatures for the senior disabled. So that election will go forward. There were not any candidates, potential candidates who got enough signatures for the family or the at-large. So the board is being asked to consider whether it chooses to make changes to the procedures for those signatures, uh, for those two positions. And we have the independent third-party monitor here as well to also answer questions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Please.
So the, uh, Director said that there was a recommendation from the third-party monitor. What is their recommendation?
Um, Scott, do you want to give recommendation of summarize the memo that you sent in terms of proceeding with the first, yeah, why don't you summarize that?
I understand.
We'd be happy to.
And introduce yourself, please, to, um, for the record. Thanks.
Yes, my name is Scott Hopola. I'm with Resident Participation Services, the independent third-party monitor for this election. Because we, we are following the rules of the Housing Authority and the Code of Federal Rights, there was the signature requirement. Uh, we recommended initially that that be repealed as soon as we became aware of it, but due to a number of other circumstances, that wasn't, uh, an option. Because we did receive one candidate who was able to meet that signature requirement. We believe it would be unfair to stop the current election. I know that it is inefficient, but, uh, she did put the effort into getting all those signatures. We also don't think it's fair to have one election with two different sets of rules. So, we would recommend that the election with the eligible candidate continue, and a special election be held for those other seats. And that's up to you as to whether you would like to completely get rid of all of the signature requirements or reduce the number of signatures.
So, so what would be your recommendation with regard to that?
Well, in the past, uh, we've seen that there's been a healthy number of candidates running for each office. I understand that sometimes, uh, it's good to have a signature requirement to ensure that there, the, there aren't too many candidates running and that that it, but we haven't seen that as a problem before, so it would, I, I don't think that you really need that, any signature requirements.
So were you involved in the previous elections where I guess it was said that, uh, there was and followed the requirement for signatures in the past couple of elections? Were you involved in those?
Oh, yes, we were never informed about that rule. Uh, my colleague, Joe, who's on the call with us here, he was doing a, a Google search and found the resolution online. So as soon as we became aware of it, we brought it to the Housing Authority and asked if it was signed because the document that we found wasn't signed, so we thought perhaps it was just proposed, and we asked if it had been repealed.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, I have a question. This is, uh, Deion, Commissioner Bussie-Reader, Chair Bussie-Reader. My question is, what is the guidelines around campaigning prior to getting the signatures?
Yeah, so we recommend that potential candidates don't campaign, but it's not prohibited because the definition of campaigning can be as simple as saying, "I am running to be a candidate," or, uh, saying, "I do support residents' rights to have a say about how they are governed." So there's no rule that prohibits it, but we recommend that candidates refrain from going out there and doing too much that could potentially lead them to violate campaign rules.
Violate camp, I think that's where I'm struggling, because I've gotten a couple of phone calls from residents stating that a few, well, one commit, one candidate resident in particular actually campaigned. And I just need to get some clarity around what that means, and then I, I see your question along. So you're saying, you're saying they can actually put out leaflets to say that they're running?
Correct. So, there is no rule against campaigning. Right? That's, that's fine. If they break the campaign rules before they have been trained, then they're going to get themselves into trouble. So that's why we discourage that. Also, if you, if a candidate goes out and starts campaigning before they have their property manager verify that they're eligible to run as a candidate, then they're going to create confusion.
Okay, Commissioner Strickland, you have a question?
A question, a couple of questions. First and foremost, do we know how many folks for the, the, what's it, for the family Commissioner? How many folks took out petitions that were planning to turn them in? Do we have a number on that? One. Just, no, one made the ballot, but, but prior to that, do we know how many folks were planning to turn in petitions? Do we have a number of that, or how many actually turned in petitions but did not make the, the, the number threshold?
For, for the family office, we received one petition.
So no one, no one turned in anything?
Well, we, so, we received two, uh, applications for senior. One met the signature requirement.
Okay.
We received one application for the at-large. We did not meet the signature requirement. And we received one for the family that did not meet the signature requirement.
Okay, so we're talking, yeah, I, it, I, you know, I don't know what the best way to, to handle that, but is the, in your experience, I don't know if you've only done elections at the Housing Authority here in the District of Columbia, but in your expertise, is that a, a real election? You know what I mean, not a real election, but without representation, with the 50,000 residents and only four folks applied for a position? How do we reconcile that? How do we reconcile that?
We have worked with other housing authorities. Some do include this for certain positions. And like I said, in your circumstance, it doesn't seem like the, the purpose is really necessary, is warranted for the DC Housing Authority. It's hard to say how many candidates would have run but for the signature requirement and the pandemic. I believe that there would probably won't be more based upon previous elections. So that's why if the board chooses to proceed with this resolution to either get rid of the signature requirement altogether or reduce it down to something much smaller, that there would be a lot more residents that would apply. And at the point in time that new rules are implemented for a special election, the Code of Federal Rights requires that we give at least 30 days' notice of these additional new rules for candidates to apply. So that may increase the number of residents that are interested in running.
Also, Scott, I think for the commissioners, I think it would be helpful and maybe you and Joe could pull up as performance, just in all fairness, yes, there were more candidates, but not a huge number, like two or three for each position. And the total number of vote for each position is only in the hundreds, even though we've got over 6,000 public housing households who could vote. So I just want to put that in context.
Director, I get it. And I looked at those numbers too from the previous election. But my, my concern is, is that not having fair representation for certain reasons. And I know they talked about the campaigning. That was as clear as mud on should you campaign or not campaign prior to any of this. And my recommendation, just hearing this right now, is that everyone that was, that turned in should be, be on the ballot. Or if we don't do that, we put it open again for everyone starts over from scratch and you go from there. And then the person that did make the ballot, maybe they get to choose their ballot positioning. You know what I mean? I don't know, there's some, some advantage to that maybe, but, but to not, to give them something for actually getting the signatures. But then again, we go back to what did that person campaign or not campaign and based on the rules, it's not illegal, it could be illegal, or if they break a rule. I mean, that's, that's too confusing. And these positions are too important, as we've seen this past year, that they're critical. So I say either you let everyone in or you throw everyone out. And that's my recommendation to my colleagues on this. And I'm no campaign expert by any means, but that's my, my thoughts based on what I've heard today and what I've seen up until this point.
I'd like to clarify that there is no rule about campaigning. Just so that's clear.
No, but I, I get what you just said, but Scott, just based on you explaining it to me, and I've had my fair shares around campaigns. Like I said, I'm not the expert by any means, but I have been around several large campaigns across this country. And based on you can campaign, but if you break the rules during that time period, you could be penalized and all that. That's scary enough for me not to get involved if I, there's a chance I may break the rules or I haven't been to campaign training yet. So does that, you know what I mean, that, that could just make the waters blurrier than they need to be. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Commissioner Strickland. I think you took the words out of my mouth as well. And I'm, I'm following the chat. Some of the residents have a different set of understandings than the way that you just explained this, Scott. And I, I am in favor of what Commissioner Strickland stated. I think we'll be doing our residents a major disservice if we move forward with one candidate when all of them have attempted, at least four, we are familiar with have attempted to get on a ballot. Thank you for that. Any other questions, concerns, comments from the commissioners? Commissioner.
Yes, so I'm clear. The recommendation is that we move forward with the election for the senior person that got the requisite number of signatures. And that for the other two, we're essentially starting over.
It's the recommendation from, it's the third-party monitor, but that's not what we have to accept. That's just a recommendation. And I do see, commissioners, I do see that, I'm so sorry, I was about to say my, my normal name for you. I see Mr. Umar has joined us and I do want to give him an opportunity to share his testimony as well. And then I'll come back to the commissioners. Please, Mr. Umar, you can begin your testimony.
For being late, I just was on a other meeting with a council member, explaining the same situation, right? She said that it's not, basically it's not fair to assess, but she said it's up to you all, it's up to you all to make that decision on whether or not it should start over or either that we just allow everybody to be on it because I was misled, you know, by Slogan, not misled, but misinterpreted by Mr. Slogan when he says submit what you have. And that's what I did. I submitted what I had, what I had. I don't think it's fair for me to submit, for him saying submit what I have and then go another way. And then you said there's no rules for campaigning. I didn't know that. I thought all we had to do was, my understanding was that we had to get signatures to get on the ballot. Not to give out cards like Ms. Janet Parker did. She gave out information. See, I can't, well, she gave out information. That's, that's letting you know. When I went to certain properties, they told me that they not going to sign because she already been there and she is the senior disabled commissioner. That's what I was, that's what people was telling me. So I didn't get no, a lot of the signatures because of this card that she put out and the information that she told a lot of the seniors. From my understanding, you wasn't supposed to submit any of this. That's already should be a disqualification because it put me at a disadvantage and anybody else at a disadvantage. When you go to these properties, somebody already put out this information right here. This is what they tell, she telling you that she already advocate for seniors in this age. It's wrong. I would have got 200 signatures too if I could have done that. I just think it's wrongful and it feel like I'm being, I'm being gone against now because it's only her and I that was running against one another. And I feel like it's totally wrong if I heard directly from you all, submit what you got. And you said during a pandemic, you also said that, okay, every other board did it where they went, what, 10%? So 10% of that, I qualify. 10 for, 10% for that, can't cancel qualify. And so does anybody else because we got 10%. Now we turn around, and Ms. Blackson as well. Now we turn around and elect her, want her, then we gonna have to pay again to do, pay you again to do this all over. We should be able to just do it just this one time and do the 10%. And that's even for everybody. I ain't saying take, disqualify her just because she did this, which is still wrong. At least give us the opportunity to be able to be on, to be able to be challenged and compete. I mean, and I think it's just totally wrong because you got to understand, people got underlying health condition.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure Mr. Umar was finished. Are you, are you finished?
I wasn't, but it went out some type of way. I, I don't know what just happened.
I think we, I think we got a, I think we, we're going to make it, we're going to have a resolve for you, sir. But do you have anything else to add to your testimony?
No, ma'am. Thank you all for just listening to me, right? Because like I say, I mean, it's just wrong. Because if I just knew I, if I could just submitted this card right here to myself, to people, I could have probably had 400 votes. I mean, 400, yes, ma'am.
I got you. Thank you, sir. No, we appreciate you. We appreciate you so very much. Any other, yes, ma'am. I was moving us forward.
I'm sorry. I was going to say I have a recommended proposal for the board to consider.
I think you and I on the same page. Please, go right ahead. You, you can announce it. I think we're on the same page. Go right ahead.
I was going to suggest that the board could vote to eliminate or reduce the number of signatures and then amend, I don't know if you have to amend the resolution or I guess would be amended to then accept the candidates who submitted applications for the positions and allow them to be on the ballot. Which I think is consistent with what most of the residents have, leaders have said.
I got you. Commissioner Hoffman, please proceed.
I, I disagree. I, I wonder what the card said that Mr. Umar has. Because if that woman said she is elected, that would be, you know, not true. I don't think we should, if, if we eliminate, I, I don't know. I think letting the election proceed as it is with people who submitted insufficient cards is a mistake. Either they have to submit the right number or we have to start over. And the quest, the only question in my mind was whether the person who did get 200 also has to start over. And the reason I think starting over and letting people who did not run because they thought they would have to run around the property collecting a lot of signatures should now have a chance to run if we're eliminating or vastly reducing the signature requirement. Anything we do will be changing the rules midstream. But I do think that the people who have already collected signatures have an advantage in that they have already spoken to a number of residents. So I don't think we have to give them something else in addition.
Thank you. So we're going to move you guys to take action. I'm, I'm actually, I'm going to actually make a recommendation. And then Andrea, I need your support in terms of how this can be moved forward. I am going to vote to, I would like to eliminate the signature requirement and allow all candidates that submitted names to be on the ballot. Is that doable or is that possible? How do we move forward with that?
I think we also should hear from Scott because he is running this based on the rules that were in place. So you would also be saying that what we've done up to this point is no longer in effect.
So Scott, you gave us your recommendation. So is it more that you want to share or is this proper or improper?
I can, I can sure, I do have a copy of the card that was raised. I know there was a question about what was on that card by Ms. Hoffman. On one side of it, it says Janet Parker, Advocate for Seniors and Disabled, Safe, Clean, Affordable Housing, Dignity and Quality of Life. On the other side, it says Advocate, Advocate for Seniors and Disabled, Janet Parker. So I don't really see that as campaign material, but the, the other issue of of allowing all candidates that submitted any number of signatures to be on the ballot. It's not our job to create the rules for the election. We follow the rules that the board gives us and that are required by law. This would create a potential claim for a candidate that did meet the signature requirements. And I believe that it does create at least the appearance of bias against the work that they put into meeting the requirements that were in place at the time. So.
And you've announced, right? You've announced that first candidate, right? It's been posted.
Yeah, we, we didn't receive any notice that we had to continue proceeding with the election as planned because we weren't given any notice. We, you know, we have to continue to just follow the rules until the rules change. Having the rules change in the middle of an election is, I, we can't advise that as wise. Like I said, we're not the ones that are responsible for setting the election rules. If you take on this resolution, then that would create a special election under which rules could be changed.
Okay, commissioners, we, we have a situation here. I think we're all clear that we need to make a decision.
Looks like my colleague is, wants to speak on behalf of them.
That's a resident? I'm sorry, sir.
No, he's with the election monitor.
Okay, sir, I'm sorry. I can't, I don't see your name. I apologize. Please, you can, you can interject.
Oh, thank you. My name's Joe Kelly. I work with Scott Hopola. I'm part of the independent third-party monitor team. And I just wanted to remind the board that there are HUD regs, federal regs, in place that require 30 days' notice to the residents about who is on the ballot. And so the, at this point, the February 21st elections are less than 30 days away. And so if we were to put people at this time, put people on the ballot who were not previously on the ballot, then we and the board would be in violation of federal law regarding elections. So I just wanted to.
Then you would just move the date a few days or a week ahead for the election.
That's a possibility too.
So you could still meet the 30 days. I just want to be clear.
Repeat that, Brenda. I'm sorry.
So you can still meet the 30-day requirement. Right now, there's an election date set based on the timetable that was laid out for this whole election process. And what Joe was saying is that federal law requires a 30-day notice once people have been put on the ballot. And the date that is set wouldn't be 30 days. And I'm saying, well, you can change the date of the election. You could just add, you know, move that a week.
That will give the other, that will give, that will give everyone more time to get more, okay?
It would give, it would meet the notice requirement of 30 days that he just raised.
Got it, got it.
That's, that's, that's the easiest part of this discussion, I think.
We have to give 30 days' no, notice of the existence of the election and the opportunity for people to run and then 30 days' notice of the election. So we could not do this by February 15.
Not by February 15th, Commissioner. I think the two competing discussions on the table is your proposal is that the whole election, I believe that it would, everybody would have to start it all over.
I'm okay with, with electing the person who submitted 200 signatures on the date of the election.
And then the subsequent one would not happen, yes. If that, so the proposal that originally came to the board then would be the moving forward with the senior candidate who qualified and then having a special election for the other two positions. And you're right, that would not be by February 15th. There's a different timeline and we laid that out in the memo. So that would take us into April, but we would meet those requirements, yes.
What if we, what if we move to reduce the number of signatures?
How about eliminate signatures?
But if you eliminate, this is the issue. If you still move forward with the one individual who submitted the appropriate number of names, that's eliminating what you just heard from one of your public witnesses who stated clearly that he was under the impression that when we said to submit what you have, that's what he did. Then that was unclear. So I'm not in a position, I don't believe it's even, it is not equitable for us to move in this direction and eliminate him from being able to be on the ballot and then move forward and have another election and allow the other individuals who submitted less numbers of signatures than he did to move forward. That's, that's not fair either, Ann. So I think we got to be mindful of.
The bottom line is, the way we have done it is not fair, period. No matter what we do to correct it, it will not be fair.
It'll be more equitable. It may not be fair, but it'll be equitable because everyone who aimed to try to get there will be able to be on the ballot.
But people who didn't try because they worried about the pandemic will not now have a chance to try when there's no new signature requirement.
By reducing the number of signature, we'll actually open it up and allow everyone to participate.
We're eliminating the signatures. But I have a question, which is can a senior or disabled person run for the at-large seat?
Yes.
Perhaps that would answer Mr. Umar's. Perhaps that would answer Mr. Umar's question.
Didn't answer my question. I'm also being mindful to, to the, to the resident's comments as well, and I think we should take that into consideration. Uh, many of them are saying that this is not, this is not organized well. And it really is a poor representation of their leadership, and I agree. So Commissioners, we need to make, we need to take some action. Need to come to some resolution on this. About ten percent? What about ten percent? What if, what if we use a number of ten percent of the two hundred signatures required?
I have a question, Chair. So if we're saying a new signature number, are you saying that we're throwing out the first election and we're gonna do another election? Or are you saying that if folks turned in ten percent whenever the signatures would do, that's the number that we go with?
That's what I'm saying.
I, why can't we just do what the executive director was saying by just saying that we, we're gonna put these four candidates on the ballot and just move, you know what I mean? And just move forward where we don't touch the signature count.
I am in favor of that, but Commissioner Hoffman says that's, that's not satisfactory to the person, the one person who actually was able to get the two hundred.
You know, I, I mean, I, I do think that that's the only race, there's two candidates in. I mean, it's only fair to allow that person to choose their ballot position if that helps, you know? But I don't think there's gonna be a fair way of doing it because that person did get out and get two hundred signatures. Um, so I, I, you know, I don't know the best way forward on it, but having one person on an election is not the best way forward at all.
No, it's not. And, and I'm not in favor of that.
If we go with the people who have already submitted signatures, we will only have one person on the ballot for at-large and one person on the ballot for family. So the only person we're really disadvantaging is the person who got two hundred signatures.
Satisfy the comments that we gave. We, we're the leaders and we provided, we provided advice and we share at a public meeting for people to, we encourage them, don't worry, turn in your signatures. That's what we said.
But, but, maybe split hairs, Chair, uh, Chairwoman, not to cut you off. I'm sorry, I apologize. Is that, what if you opened it up for a week to see what, if, if you cut it down to ten percent, that's twenty signatures. If you open up the collection period again for another week, well, say from Friday, then have it due next Friday, that does plant and push things off, but that doesn't penalize the person that has their two hundred signatures. They're on the ballot. And anyone that got ten percent between now and I understand what Ann's saying, to make a competitive race, gives it a week for a person to get twenty signatures, uh, because folks have, I don't know if anyone else pulled petitions prior to then, but I think that that would give it the opportunity to allow other folks to turn in up to ten percent.
Yes, I'll say, Scott, can you please uh, give us the, we need thirty days.
We would need to do it for at least thirty days, just if there's a change in the rules. Ten days is insufficient.
Okay.
And, and this is Commissioner Harris, but that still takes away from another poignant uh, concern in regards to COVID. The whole reason for some of these folks not wanting to have to get out there and get those numbers. So I'm, I don't know if that's a good fix either, to extend it to allow them more time to get the, the signatures. It wasn't the timeframe, it was the condition.
But one thing is, they're gonna have to get out and campaign anyway to win their seat. You know, I'm not saying that, that there's not many ways you can campaign without being in someone's face. There's obviously, there's other ways to do that, but you know, if you're not getting one signature or two signatures or twenty signatures, uh, I would, you know, how would effective campaign would you be? And I'm not saying that there's not campaign geniuses out there that can figure it out, but I'm just saying that that makes that even more difficult for that person if they're uh, using, if, if they're just scared to interact with other residents anyway.
Well, keep in mind that campaigning, like you said, can be done different ways and it's an option. I mean, it wouldn't, it's not gonna be a great idea if they don't, but this is a requirement just to get on the ballot. That's, that's the restriction with COVID. So not quite apples and oranges, but I totally get what you're saying. But this is just that one hurdle for them to make the decision if they make the ballot to campaign the best way they feel fit.
Okay. So now we need, we still need some board action. We need to.
Several options. You can call for the questions if the General Counsel can um, put forth what is on the table. I think, um, I don't know, we have the one proposal, the initial proposal, which was to go forward with the um, the one qualifying senior candidate and then reduce or eliminate the signatures and call a special election. And then the other, which is to include all of the candidates who have um, who submitted application, reduce the signature requirement and include all of the candidates who um, applied. And I don't know if there's a third one to just throw everything else out and start all over again, but you.
So, so. I would, I would lean towards your, your first um, option. In that, I mean, I, I don't want to disadvantage the person that went out and got the requisite number of signatures. So I think um, I would favor let, let the third party monitor continue with that process and, and have that election. And then for the other two positions, we, we start over and I would be in favor of, of eliminating any signature requirements.
I second the motion.
Let me be clear. So Commissioner Skinner, are you saying move forward with the one election?
Yes.
I, I, I don't know. Okay.
Madam Chair, it looks like that, that's been moved and seconded, and then you can call for the vote and then determine what happens and then.
Well, no, I, I was, I was making a statement. I wasn't putting that forward as a, as a motion.
That, that's one of the two proposals. That's the first one is before you, and then there's the one that.
And that, and that's what's in the resolution that was in the package, right?
Correct. That's what I was trying to say. That one is on the table and then there's a counterproposal on the table. So Madam Chair, you can call for the vote on, you know.
Just, just to clarify, in, in the resolution that was submitted, it didn't, it didn't indicate whether we were reducing the number of signatures or eliminating signatures.
Correct. It was asking the board to decide.
Right, right. So basically, resolution is actually, we could make a resolution to reduce the number of signatures.
Yes.
That's the way. As way is written, as for the special election.
Okay, so we could move to reduce the number of signatures, which will, we can decide what that number can be, ten percent or twenty percent. Or just a number, period, correct, Andrea? And then moving, and then we can vote on, okay, all right, so.
And that would be for the two remaining seats, the way it's currently written. So for the family and at-large.
So would not apply to the one seat that the person actually got the two hundred.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So we can, you, you all can call, could, could, could put forth a motion.
But I, I would still like my, my recommendation to be considered as well, which was just adding those that submitted to the ballots. You know, just uh, I know it's not, it's not fair, but I think just, you know, put them on, get them on the ballot and.
You're being removed. So basically, you're in favor of removing the signature requirement, period. And, and that means.
No, it's, it, it has, the, the, the signature requirement would be moved, you know, it's not a, it's not an issue of it. You know, it's just those that submitted who have the intent of getting on the ballot should be on the ballot. Versus, because if we do remove the signature requirement, that, we have to do a thirty day notice before they can do a special election. So that would just push elections out even farther. So that's why I just say, just put them on the ballot. And it's not the optimal situation. This still is only gets us to a sixty percent solution, but that's better than, than zero. And we have one competitive race and we don't have to pay for another election to come about in.
That's the second proposal.
Five days, right, so.
And he's saying that would apply to all seats, including the, the senior seat, Commissioner Strickland?
Correct. We just put everyone that.
Basically sweeping everyone in who has applied and then they're all on the ballot and then you move forward.
Right, it does. It does, it does move the election still. It moves it a few, uh, because there, there has to be thirty day notice of who's on the ballot. So that notice would have to go out.
Okay, so let, I see Ann has a motion.
I have a motion to adopt the resolution as drafted twenty-two-ten and to um, make it to remove the signature requirement in the resolved. So that the election would proceed for the senior and disabled position as scheduled. And that will fill in the dates when we get them, but um, that additional notice has to be given thirty days. And then the election held no sooner than thirty days after that. So it would be the resolution as drafted, except that it would be remove the signature requirement rather than reduce.
I second it.
You want a roll call vote, Madam Chair? No further discussion.
I just need to be clear before I vote. So removing the signature requirement, Commissioner Hoffman would allow the current people who submitted names to get on the ballot. If you're saying, anybody can get on the ballot at this moment.
Yes.
For the special election.
No.
Yeah, I was about to say, that's, it's too confusing the way we're saying, and I, I'm with, I'm with Commissioner Harris. I just need to be, be clear. So right now, we have one, we have one resident that met the requirement. Are we saying that we're removing all the signature requirements?
No.
The resident commissioner election, the, the next to the last, whereas the resident commissioner election for the senior disabled position will be held on February twenty-one and twenty-two. And only one person qualified for that election. And then the second whereas is a special resident commissioner election for the family and at-large board seats. And then remove the signature requirement for the special election.
So the motion was made by Commissioner Hoffman and seconded by Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
We ready for a roll call vote? Commissioner Lee?
She had to leave an emergency. I'm sorry.
Okay, Commissioner is absent. Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Commissioner Slower is absent. Commissioner Strickland?
Can I hear you?
No.
No. Commissioner Talia Pharaoh is absent. Commissioner Van Goshry is absent. Uh, Commissioner Felcicchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
No.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
And Chair Reader, Bussy Reader?
No.
No. We have four yeses, three nos. The resolution does not pass.
Does it?
It does.
Four?
It does.
Yes, it passed.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
It does, four and three.
Four and three, that.
Thank you all. We can move on.
Everyone is clear, but was just.
I don't think we are, but I, I think.
So what is approved is that the resident, the senior um, candidate who qualified under the previous rules is on the ballot and will be going forward. And there will be a special election for the family candidate and the um, and the at-large candidate with no signatures.
Correct.
And that election will be posted and announced. I believe the Independent Third Party Monitor said they could do that next week by the first. And that election process will run out with thirty days' notice for people to get on the ballot and thirty days for another election. Both elections should be concluded um, by around the middle of April. Which, just for the record, will not meet the city council's um, timeline, but we have informed them. It does meet the requirement that the election be conducted by March thirty-first and we do not expect to get pushback, but. Okay, Madam Chair, are you ready for the um, next um, item on the agenda?
I am, but I do want to take in a, an account that you have, um, if we're paying attention to this chat, I think that we owe some residents a different, a conversation because this is, this is not good. But I will move forward with Resolution twenty-two-zero-three. Please proceed.
Okay, um, we do have.
Don't care nothing about us, man.
We do have a presentation, staff presentation um, on the MTW Plan Amendments. Um, Hannah Kerner will be leading that along with Andre Gold. And.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am just pulling this into a slideshow. Okay. I will um, jump right into it, into the MTW. Um, today, um, as we switch gears, um, I'm gonna give a brief MTW overview. Uh, we will go into a lot more detail about MTW and the MTW Plan process um, over the next few months as we approach the FY twenty-three plan. Um, but I do want to make sure that everyone has a little bit of background, um, since we're talking about amending the FY twenty-two plan today. Um, sorry, uh, the MTW um, is kind of known as America's Housing Policy Lab. Um, and that is because the uh, program allows designated agencies some flexibilities to allow them to design and test locally designed strategies. Um, those strategies need to, sorry, I'm just gonna move what is probably a gray box on your screen. Um, those strategies need to meet one of the following objectives. Um, they need, they have three possible objectives. One is to use federal dollars more efficiently and effectively. Another is to encourage residents and participate, participants to obtain employment and become self-sufficient. And the third is to increase housing choices for low-income families. In order to allow um, MTW agencies to test these different strategies, HUD grants two types of flexibilities. One is policy flexibilities and the other is funding fungibility. Um, funding fungibility basically means that we receive all, um, several buckets of funding into one. So we're able to use them with a little bit more local discretion. Um, in order to receive those flexibilities though, um, we need to submit an annual plan each year. That annual plan has four components. One is to provide some basic agency data um, as well as information about um, development and uh, sorry, development intentions. Another is uh, talking about our ongoing initiatives, um, kind of the policy flexibilities that we've asked for and currently have implemented. The third is proposed new initiatives, um, and new ways that we're asking for um, for policy flexibility. And the fourth and final is some um, budget data. Today, we're going to be discussing Resolution twenty-two oh-three to approve an amendment to the DCHA FY twenty-two MTW Plan. And um, before we get into the details of the um, amendment, um, I would like to give you a little bit of an idea of what we've done to date. Uh, so we drafted the plan in December, um, and then published the plan for thirty days' public notice um, and engaged with the public during that time. Um, I'll give a little bit more detail about that on the next slide. Um, at this point, we are here with you today to consider um, your approval to submit to HUD. Um, our intention is to submit um, very early February and then hopefully receive HUD approval and comments um, shortly after that. Um, with public participation, um, the comment period was from December twelfth, twenty-twenty-one until January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. And we held our public hearing on January fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, we posted our Q and A's on our website, um, so that they were accessible to everyone. And the Facebook Live video was also available throughout the comment period and is actually still there today. Um, by the end of the comment period, one hundred thirty-two people had viewed that video. Um, and we held the Citywide Advisory Board Meeting on January twenty-fifth um, on WebEx. And we had eleven participants at that meeting um, from the Citywide Advisory Board. Um, the intent of the amendment um, before you today is to allow DCHA to. Um the intent of the amendment um before you today is to allow DCHA to conserve funding resources by exploring the use of tools and opportunities that arose after the FY twenty-two planning process concluded. It also completes one of the final steps to convey eleven thirty-three by ground lease. This amendment uh only allows DCHA to continue planning. All related applications and transactions require separate and express approval by the board. Um and with that introduction, I'd like to turn it over to Andre Gold, our um Senior Development Manager in the Office of Capital Programs, to discuss the details about each uh property impacted by the amendment. Andre?
Thank you, Hannah. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, my name is Andre Gold, um in Office of Capital Programs. Um the first uh amendment uh that we'd like to go through is the Henson Ridge. Henson Ridge was one of our HOPE six projects. And um we've been um approached by the development partners, Urban Atlantic, um that they'd like to make some substantial uh capital improvements, um which would uh require them to need to use the rental assistance uh demonstration program, uh which is a HUD HUD program where they could get additional operating subsidy as well as be able to finance those needed improvements. Um they're looking to start that conversion uh prior to um the end of this year. Uh so that is one of the reasons why we would like to add this as part of our plan so that we can help uh move that uh process forward. And again, as Hannah stated, uh we would be coming to you again uh to speak further um about this transaction at a later date this year. Next slide. Uh Langston Terrace uh amendment.
Sorry, Andre, this is Commissioner Skinner. Yeah, can we, questions on each one separately, or I don't know if it makes sense to go through each one? Do all of them then come back and ask questions, because I have questions on each one.
I think that would be a good way to proceed, um Commissioner, because there is a lot for each one.
Right, okay, so uh, so my first question is um I'm not clear on exactly what we are doing since DCA, DCA has been aided by Urban Atlantic. What does that mean? And what is our role in in the project going forward?
So we currently uh hold a ground lease for this property um as part of uh the HOPE six. Uh there was creation of uh ACC Public Housing Units. And there's also project-based vouchers already um as part of this pro- project as well. Those public housing units, uh the developer is seeking to um convert those units to uh RAD uh assistance, which is a a a project-based voucher. And there's a uh process that we would have to go through uh with HUD as well as seeking your board approval to submit an application.
Were there, were there tax credits in this deal?
Yes, they would use uh tax credits.
This is coming, so this is the end of the compliance period?
You, you're all correct, yes.
Okay, so what, what was the original deal? Uh what was the uh, was there a right of first refusal for the housing authority or some other entity as part of that?
Uh, yes, there, there was. We're in negotiations with um our development partners as as well. And again, we'll be coming to the board to give you more information prior to making any decisions. This is just putting it in the plan so that we can start some of those.
No, I understand that, but I just wanted to get sort of the picture.
You are first.
Tax credit deal, it's coming to the end of the compliance period. There's a right of first refusal uh established, and we got to negotiate with uh our partners around how that moves forward.
Exactly correct.
Okay. So I'm sorry, how how many uh units are under ACC?
Uh there's two hundred and eighty uh rental units. I got to confirm exactly how many of those, what the split is between ACC and and and.
Vouchers, okay.
I'll confirm that for you.
All right, thank you.
If there, this is Commissioner Hoffman. If there's a right of first refusal, have we looked into buying it?
No, that's part of the negotiation.
And that will come back to us before you make a decision?
That is correct, we would need board approval.
Today's vote only allows us to submit to HUD to put into the plan that we want to consider this.
Okay. And at, the language confuses me. That has been engaged by Urban Atlantic to redevelop. They don't want us to redevelop it. They want to redevelop it?
They want to recapitalize the project like uh Commissioner Skinner said, it it's reached the end of its compliance period. And they're trying to refinance the property to pay for um needed repairs to get the uh property in in a good standing for another twenty years.
It hasn't lasted twenty yet, right? It was completed in two thousand seven?
Yes, but there are some needed uh improvements that are needed as far as mechanical equipment. It's it's a list of items that need to be upgraded.
Okay. Uh, so we're, we're only submitting this to HUD. We still get the absolute right to say no to every piece of it, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Andre, go to the next.
The the Langston uh Terrace uh parcel, there's a private owner that has approached uh DCHA um requesting a por- purchase a portion of uh land, which is approximately about twelve hundred and fifty square feet. Um, we'll show you on the next slide where we can give you an uh an idea of how big this parcel is. Um it would be at fair market um value uh if we decided to um sell this portion of land. Um it's, if Hannah, if you could go to the next slide. That pink corner there is right at the corner of twenty-first and and Eighth Street. Um, there's one building here where the number four is, is a, is a our Langston property, and you can still see that again uh at the uh, at the corner where the blue is, is the actual um land that the private owner owns. And they would require uh the um magenta piece in order uh to move forward with um an addition of a townhouse on this corner. And currently, this is all vacant land and that magenta and it's it's setback area from the street of uh public space. And again, this um approval today would just allow us to begin discussions uh with the the property owner. We would have to come back to the board uh for disposition approval after we've had a chance to actually um discuss what's entailed in this transaction prior to submitting any disposition applications uh to HUD.
I just want to put on the record the, what I learned yesterday at the DevMod meeting, which is this property is within the historical, historically landmarked property. And we, we cannot finally approve it without the approval of the Historical Preservation Board. And I kind of wonder if we could not redevelop it, why could the private owner? So I suspect this will be an exercise in futility, but that's fine.
Commissioner, again, this allows us just to go to HUD and say that we would like to consider disposing of this. There'll have to be an appraisal, a whole process, and um so that, but we noted for the record.
So Andre, what is, what is the blue color there?
That's the uh portion of property that the uh, the private landowner actually owns.
And is it residential, let's do it? Went to the left.
They're proposing. Yeah, they're proposing building another uh townhouse uh or row house uh in in this space.
Are there any other?
Any other questions? Okay, you can proceed.
Uh, the next item is a Berry Farm. Uh, this uh would allow us to uh use a new tool that uh HUD came out with earlier last year called Faircloth the RAD, uh which essentially creates a new uh public housing unit that doesn't exist uh that you can convert uh to RAD, um essentially getting a higher subsidy that you would get from typical ACC uh subsidy. Um, we're intending to use this for the Berry Farm project. Uh, there's a proposed closing for the first phase of Berry Farm. That's expected to happen within fiscal year twenty-two. Uh we're estimating uh that there could be a potential savings of about um uh four hundred thousand dollars yearly in in subsidy by using uh this tool uh for uh forty-four uh project-based uh units that would be part of the new senior building at Berry Farm. Uh there are a total of uh seventy-seven um replacement units that are going to be in that building. And we think we can use uh this tool for uh forty-four of those units as a part of this project uh for for next year as we move, move towards a financial closing for that first phase of the project at Berry Farm.
If, if I may, that's not.
Andre? I have a question. In in describe new tool, Faircloth to RAD, you said it would create new public housing units. How does, how does that happen?
So uh Faircloth is based on uh the number of um public housing units that have been um uh demolished um over time with um DCHA and what with public housing authorities um across the country. And DCHA has a a cap of about two thousand units uh that we can uh bring back as public housing um as new units. Um with uh the Faircloth, the RAD uh tool, we're using those units. And as part of bringing them back as public housing, you have to convert them to RAD once the units are built um prior to permanent conversion.
Okay, so, so you are building new units, that's why I was a question.
Yes, there's a requirement of building a a new unit that doesn't exist. And it would receive uh um public housing subsidy uh when it come, when it initially comes online and then you convert it to RAD.
Okay, I got it.
I, I don't have it. You, you say this is part of the seventy units that we were bringing back anyway.
So the the um project-based, about the project-based units that were anticipated to be at uh Berry Farm, uh we were going to use our uh MTW authority to um project-based uh provide project-based subsidy for those units. And with this new tool, um we wouldn't have to use all the subsidy from DCHA's MTW authority. We can use uh the RAD subsidy as well as layer on and um uh some of our MTW authority, which should be a savings of about four hundred thousand dollars a year.
I understand the savings, but we're not going to have seventy plus forty-four public housing units. We're still going to have the same seventy units. But forty-four of them will be financed differently.
Yes, that's correct.
And managed differently, no?
No, they'll, they'll, they'll all be managed by the same manager, but you they'll all be treated the same. So we'll have documents in place where all of the the replacement units will have the same um treatment. But you're correct, they would have a different subsidy stream.
Okay, but we're not adding public housing units.
Initially, they would be public housing units until we convert them to RAD.
Right, but they're the ones we were already building there.
I, I think that's right, Commissioner, I was trying to understand this too. This just gives us um ability to use HUD financing um for those units versus being able to use also HUD financing, but that now we can use those for other um 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 project-based HUD, project-based voucher vouchers. So same number, same kind of ultimate project, but a additional, additional federal funding to support them.
Right, but I thought that Andre said.
Yeah.
Faircloth to RAD requires new public housing. And we're creating new public housing. That is not correct, is it? We're creating the same forty-four units we were com- creating before we submitted this.
Isn't that correct, Andre? We're not adding more.
The project hasn't changed, we're just changing the way we're going to finance.
And that satisfies the Faircloth to RAD even though it's not adding public housing units?
It's a requirement that we create a new unit, and we are creating new units.
The way you're explaining it, I think I I I like Commissioner Hoffman, I'm a little confused. So that, let me try it this way. So there are forty-four units, period. There's no new units being added.
The, the project is the same, we're just subsidizing it different. This is a new project, there're going to be new units developed out of this project that don't exist.
Additional units, we are not adding one unit.
That's the, that's the word that this, that we're getting confused on. Are we adding more units or we're not adding more units?
No, the, the project is still, it's still the same.
Okay. Okay. So it's no new units, okay? Any other questions before Andre proceeds?
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question.
So I'm sorry, I can't see you, please go right ahead.
Okay. It's, it says this is a new tool that HUD is allowing us to use. When did we find out about this new tool with us being a move to work?
So it was announced early um uh in twenty-one. We actually used it for the Kenilworth project as as part of its, its closing. So those units will be Faircloth to RAD.
To, to hear, to hear you make that statement, it's, it's irritating to me because I feel with us being a move to work and anytime any new tool come about to help us find money or to even have us develop and design our own way and not be so in the box? Because being a move to work relaxes us and let us think out the box to find more money. Why wasn't the board, meaning the Board of Commissioners, giving some type of tutelage? Or to even let us know that there has been a new tool added to help us find money? This is the first time that I've heard this Faircloth to RAD. And to hear you say it came out in twenty-one and you've put this tool in Kenilworth. We're supposed to be a team. Why is it so much of a hidden figure for you all to share with us when new tools or nuances come out with us being a move to work? It's hard for you all to get us to understand or for us to even give you a yes. Why would you all not share this with us until now? This is the first time that I've heard it. And to hear that it's going on Berry Farms as well as Kenilworth. It only takes a second. Most of us are at home, you all can ask us to spend thirty minutes on our regular meetings to tell us of this nuance and explain it to us. It's totally disconnecting, disrespectful. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, and that is so noted. And I will make sure that we are more focused on updating the board as. We are more focused on updating the board as um as we learn of new of new tools that have implications. Particularly for those things that we're gonna come back to the board on. So I I I do make that commitment. And we we will regroup on that. But I would say one, and I don't know when in twenty-one, it says the spring of twenty-one. Um the reason it's coming up now and being asked to be considered in this emergency meeting is because it came after. The or the development of the um empty last year's MTW plan, at least that was so. Far down the road in terms of public notice and um. Um resident involvement that this couldn't be swept back into that plan. Um so that's why it's coming now. But I I do note your point and we have had a conversation similar to that. And we will be more focused on updating the board um appropriately.
So there's no other, okay.
Please continue.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So uh the the final amendment is eleven thirty-three uh Headquarters was also um a project. Uh that we want to add a as an amendment. As part of a prove approval needed uh for the disposition uh of the property by HUD. Uh DCHA uh just became of um. Uh HUD's expectation uh and included it as part of our our plan. This will be the final step needed. Uh in order to move forward with a long-delayed um. Redevelopment of uh DCHA Headquarters and we can move forward with a closing uh for this project uh this spring. Are there any uh questions or do? Okay, so we have um, we can move to the next one.
So so I I do have a question. Well, I I mean, the next resolution is for the same thing, right? It's for the uh the Headquarters. Right, so so.
It's related, yes.
Yeah, so so in that regard, I I just want to be clear. On where we are with regard to to the uh proposed uh move um. In in the resolution nineteen forty, uh you know, which kind of laid out the initial uh plan. It said that the director would um come back to the board with a plan for the relocation. Of of the uh DCHA Headquarters. So is is there a plan now? Um and you know, what what does that look like? Again, I I know that you're gonna come back with more detail at some point. I just want to kind of get the the big picture, the the ten thousand foot version.
Okay, yeah, yes, I'm happy to say um to report to the board. So I did submit um. Um a a briefing deck in December to the board. Um that talked about our plans for um um relocation and where we were. And of course, we're we're much further along now. And and I do want to come back to the board um specifically with um where we're going to land. But just to remind and to educate some of the uh the newer board members. That again, this is a a long, another one of these longstanding projects and. Um that was um. When we go look at the timeline, can I think we have one slide that has time on it and that'll help me quickly get everybody oriented. Oh, there's our building for those of you who haven't seen it. Um but this project um started in. We're gonna pull up that slide. Anyway.
Yeah, I can get that.
Okay, quite a few years ago, um they'll will they'll remind me of the exact date, I don't know, twenty twelve, twenty fourteen.
Thirteen, twenty thirteen, I think it was.
Thank you. Okay, and so um that was in in involved a lot of negotiations. About what would be put on this replace on the replacement of the site. Initially, the idea was that. The Headquarters was going to be part of a redevelopment on-site along with housing. Then um subsequently that moved for that the Headquarters would absolutely will be relocated. And there will be a new site built. And then there were negotiations around that. Ultimately, what the board decided in December of twenty nineteen was that the Headquarters would be demolished and instead of and would move off of site. But we would look, we were to look for commercial space. Given the favorable conditions of the commercial real estate market in the city and not use the capital to build at that time. So um that's what I have been working on over the last few months with my team. And some brokers to identify. First of all, in the last year, started actually before I got here, of course. To determine what um what were the space needs of the agency. And um where were some opportunities to find a a um new office space. And then we had a pandemic. And a different way of working, which allowed us to further consider the size needs and um. Who needed to be onsite and for how often. So that allowed us to go with the more precision. To look at um possible relocation sites. And that's the process we are in now. We have narrowed that down. And we will come back to the board um with a briefing on exactly where we are. But the bottom line is that we will move our site. We will be renting space. Our our um police um department will move in separate space. And we will have a smaller um customer service center and um for our residents, we will also have. Kiosks and um other um places um at uh uh throughout the city and and at our various. Properties for residents to transact business, including paying rent and um. Um doing other um services instead of having to come to the building, but we will still have some capacity for the folks to come. So that's where we are. Um the. Project, the Headquarters Development was supposed to have closed last August and um. That has been delayed several months. Now the development team is ready. They're ready with their financing. They're ready to close. This is the final thing that we have to do. And that is to um meet this HUD requirement for on uh demo disposal application and inclusion. Of that into our MTW plan. So that's why this is before you now. We've been working diligently with HUD, spending many, many, many. Hours and a lot of staff time led by our um COO Rachel Joseph and the whole team of folks to make sure that. We have completed all of the requirements, which are numerous. For HUD, HUD has been very, very cooperative and they are just waiting for us to um bring them the final resolutions. So that we can move this project forward hopefully in the February, early March.
Uh this is Commissioner Van Goshen and I apologize for being late. And Madam Chair, you're gonna allow me to use my minutes to go on record when it comes to eleven thirty-three. Due to the fact I'm gonna um ask, I'm gonna ask the uh Madam Chair, since I'm the seniority. The Senior Commissioner on this board. And my name was in some controversy with eleven thirty-three and I want this, I want the record to reflect this. Number one. As the only commissioner that was on the DCH's board as a director, which is the development side. And as the commissioner with sixteen years in operation. I want to go on record saying that I had to have recommended. That the District of Columbia Housing Authority will move on the parcel. In the land in which we own in Ward Six. That may not happen, but I want the records to reflect that. And that's what I voted on and that's what I recommended because the Housing Authority will be moving on a parcel of land.
Listen, Van Goshen, we can't hear you.
I've been there and 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 I know the chair sometimes don't like to hear history every chair we have. The audience don't like to hear history because Aquarius always want to go in history. We only want to hear history when it's need to be heard. I went back to the original blueprint plan from Northwest One and the name Alberta Munneling must go on your minutes. Because those team of Northwest One leaders that came out of Sursom Quarters. The Free Street. Pierce Street. They all came together in Northwest One with the Catholic Church Gonzaga. And many of us knew Mary Ann Luby. And there was also Sister Roach. She's living. Sister Roach knows the history. I've got the original blueprints in my house. So eleven thirty-three is connected with the Northwest One plan. And I'm a part of that product and I'm a loyalty to my game. The mayor can do nothing for me. The board can't do nothing for me and I have lived successfully. In your public housing unit. Off of my stipend. So I'm an economical demonstration. I caution you to make sure that eleven thirty-three is built on our own land. The employees need to know how to catch a bus to work. They can get off the train. They have uh the Navy eye. And they should not be placed somewhere. And have to struggle to eat and think. And Ward seven and eight is is the base for everything. So I want that to go in the minutes. Um Councilmember Silverman came to the board and she cautioned me and I want this to be on record. I was very coherent. When I first voted, Commissioner Neil Jones was on the board. The first vote, the mayor and her appointees, they won. The vote and that vote was the move it to eleven thirty-three. It was not the move it to eleven thirty-three. I changed my vote because Neil Jones said she didn't understand what she voted for. And I will be honest with you. I got paranoid because I don't trust nobody. Only trust Allah. And when 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 and I have the greatest respect. For a Councilmember Silverman. But I've never had no other council member to come to a board meeting. But the first council member that came to a board meeting was the Honorable Marion Burry and it was in Woodland. And Councilmember Trayon White was ANC and he was there. And Marion had cautioned us. And that was and this cautionness was real. And he sided with Commissioner Slow and I didn't. But Walker Jones and Dean Wood got Bill. So once again, because I would no longer sit on this board as a commissioner. And I want to go on record, if I wanted to run, I can win. But after being on a board for sixteen years. And I have used my degree on this board. And I've been an ancestor to this board. I brought Mary Williams to the committee room, Edgar Khan. Dr. Francis Wesley. And I'm now reading Block One-on-One. And that has to be said today as I leave. And this may be the last board meeting I be at. Because once a new commissioner is sworn in, Commissioner Van Goshen will never have this opportunity again. So if it go on record in the minute, but it's also on tape. So I want to say that and I want to say it very well. That whoever sits on this board and you're a resident commissioner. Please ask them to educate you on the zoning laws. As I've been educated. And that's what I needed to say. And I'm gonna tell you where I still stand on. I stand on firm that eleven thirty-three, when it is ready to be built, it is to be built on DCHA land. Proceed on.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Goshen. For the record, I enjoy the history that you share because it does educate me. So we can proceed. Any other commissioners? You have any questions, comments?
Yes.
And I hope I don't sound too hype. I just came back from the doctor. So I'm gonna calm down.
You're fine. You're fine. Commissioner Hoffman, please proceed.
It's pushing me. It's okay.
Um, the previous director installed a fairly elaborate camera system. On some of the properties that reports to a big screen in headquarters. Uh will that be preserved or just gotten rid of?
No, ma'am. That is part of the um Office of the Attorney General um lawsuit requirement. And that uh monitoring system will be installed in the new um police um headquarters.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Have any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Counsel here. Um I understand that we need to do something with those three portions of eleven thirty-three. Within the temporary space that we're going to lease, do we know how long we will be leasing until it is completed?
Most commercial lease um for to get favorable terms, you are talking about um ten to twelve years. So it's not a short-term um situation in order to get any um favorable terms and to be able to build out office space to meet. The needs of the agency, which is part of this design, there which there will be a design process. So um you're talking about probably if I think all of the. The properties we've looked at, the offers are around twelve years.
Hearing what Commissioner Van Goshen said about the constituents of being used to eleven thirty-three's present location. And our temporary location is would it be?
Parties around there where they can actually at eleven thirty-three, they can catch the subway and do their business. They have a place. Places that they can eat and your employees have to have a good morale in order to function.
Yes.
Thank you. That's that's my question.
Yes.
Our temporary spot, does it offer that same?
Yes, that's part of the criteria that um was put forth for looking at space. That one of the most important things that it would be accessible by tra- to transportation, public transportation. Um there it's not likely to have the same type of um parking accommodations. But there will be some and the the other thought is with our for our customers. That they could access services in places that are convenient to them. And we are very far behind in terms of technology. We have people coming down with stacks of pieces of paper in their hands where other. Um programs and services are able to do things electronically. But we want to be able to accommodate people either where they live, if that's comfortable for them. Or those who need to come down and need more of an in-touch in person, we will be able to do that. We will have a customer service center. That is will be very conducive to that. But again, the goal is to make sure that we have. Kiosks and services available near where people live so that if you don't want to come to where we are, you don't have to. But if you need to. They'll be accommodated.
Uh I want to ask one question. What?
Can I say Commissioner Counsel is finished?
Okay, my last question. Within all with with all these three resolutions that we're trying to pass today. All of these are an ask for us to start being able to meet the deadline to receive the funding. Or the extra funding or the nuances of funding. But you all will still return back to the board for us to actually lay out the plan correctly. Am I right?
Yes, that is correct, except for on Headquarters, which of course. The board has already approved the Headquarters deal. So all that's left for Headquarters is the closing. And then the solidification of the um the new the new office space, which I. Which, you know, was obviously an executive decision, but I will come back and brief the board.
All right, thank you.
Um what I want to know is what wards are you planning on moving eleven thirty-three in? What wards did you look at for the record?
We looked across the city and we will be coming back. Um.
What wards are looking favorable?
Um we're looking and um. I don't I don't want to disclose that.
Okay, the reason why this is important to me is because right now, and we're talking politics. And we're talking contracts.
Yes.
Right now, DCHA with politics been in Ward Six. Once DCHA move out to Ward Six, whatever ward that DCHA. Once D C H A move out to Ward Six, whatever ward that D C H A will be in, there will be economics being distributed with wealth. Which mean that our employees will be eating in your ward. They will be spending money in your ward. They will be getting tickets on their cards in that ward and that ward will be getting some revenue. Would John, excuse me, would John Pacheco office somehow never present to this board? A type of trend to show us how much money that eleven thirty-three will be losing. Once it moves into another ward, because as we get commissioners, hopefully you will have a focus group. That will begin to look at the distribution of economics, which mean money. That the, the residents who will go into these wards will now be eaten. Because Harry Teeters and McDonald's so far in Ward Six has been making a lot of money off of us, the residents. And none of us working at McDonald's on New York Avenue. So now in this contract, and this is what I call equity, Mr. William Jordan. Equity means what's in it for residents, not just a resident council. It's the residents that lives in the Housing Toys Voucher Program, the residents that live in public housing, our employees. In which I hope Brenda tell us how many of our employees and give us numbers. How many of our employees once live in public housing or the Housing Toys Voucher Program that work for your agency as we speak now? I also want to know to see the trend. Any employee who've been working for the Housing Authority for forty or fifty years may have came out of our public housing. The board needs to know this when you talk about your employees and you talking about the distributed economics in neighborhoods. And we need to begin to look at this while we approaching moving forward, whatever ward we move in. Because the Citywide Advisory Board. Is a board, a group of people that needs to study this and they need to study it with the Urban Institute, the Joint Center. Physical Policy Center. So that as they move on, they can learn like I learned. The only difference is I had to pay for my education and they should be able to get this training cost effectively under HUD training. That needs to be, and, and then when it comes back to the board, we now are making intelligent contract decisions. Because we talking about contracts. You talking about somewhere being located for twelve years, maybe in any ward of the city, but you know it won't be Ward Six. That's one thing that's.
Thank you, Ms. Yeah, I've allowed you go past both of your five minutes. I do need to call.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No problem at all. I need to call for a vote. On the two amendments that we have before us.
So Andrea, so the first resolution is to amend the M T W plan as proposed. Um, and so we'd like to put that forth, um, for motion.
A motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Skinner.
Yes.
Commissioner Slover, absent. Commissioner Strickland. Commissioner Talaferro, absent. Commissioner Van Goshery. Commissioner Van Goshery.
Listening and I'm thinking.
Okay, we can come back.
Come back, I'll be last.
Okay, Commissioner Counsel. Commissioner Felchikio.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
I'm sorry, which resolution are we voting on? Both of them or just?
M T W.
M T W, it's Resolution twenty-two oh three.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee. Oh, she's absent. Commissioner Van Goshery.
Okay, can I, can I poll the votes, please?
I, we're not finished, not in the middle of the vote, we gotta.
Okay, I want to be last because I just came in.
I'll go next.
Okay, Commissioner Chairman Bussie Reader.
Yes.
Okay, we have all yeses for everyone who's present. Commissioner Van Goshery.
Abstain.
Abstain. The resolution passes.
Then Madam Chair, the, um, thank you, thank you so much to the commissioners for your support. Um, the final resolution then is, um, to allow us to, um. Uh, submit application to HUD for the, um, demo disposition of eleven thirty-three. So it's a companion resolution and, um, I hope we can get a motion.
A motion.
Okay, so for Resolution twenty-two oh four, um, Commissioner Skinner.
Before we go to the vote, I see a hand up. Commissioner Counsel, do you have your hand up or do you, is that from earlier? We just moved the motion. Okay, all right, thank you. Please proceed.
Commissioner Skinner. Commissioner Slover is absent. Commissioner Strickland.
Yes.
Commissioner Talaferro is absent. Commissioner Van Goshery.
Being that eleven thirty-three is going to be moved whether we like it or not. And it's in the original plan that it have to be moved, I will vote yes. For it to be removed from eleven thirty-three parcel.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Counsel. Did I hear a yes? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Felchikio.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee is absent. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
And Chairman Bussie Reader.
Yes.
The resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So moving forward, um, Vice Chair Counsel will chair the rest of the meeting. Thank you all. Please proceed.
Vice Chair, you have. Six residents who have signed up to testify and we'll start with Denise Blackson.
Ms. Blackson.
Ms. Blackson. We can come back to Ms. Blackson. The next is, uh, Ms. Settles, Ms. Karen Settles. Both are on the line, but both are muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, Ms. Settles.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I first like to say we are not in support of the, uh, twenty-two oh three move into work plan. Uh, I like to elaborate on that, but first I, I need to say. As the Chair of the Citywide Advisory Board, I concur with, um, Commissioner Van Goshery. On just about everything she said as it relates to the history and where we're going. With this, with this emergency move that we are making, it's very convenient for the powers that be, which I will call you all at this moment. But I'd like to take a short step into why we are able to do this. And that is the move to work. Historically, in nineteen ninety-five, move to work was introduced. It was introduced to enlighten housing authorities around the nation. To be able to do some of the things that they would not normally do. I say that because I kept hearing in the previous resolution about what that regulations was and how the enforcement would go. Conveniently, on a fast track, we can do this move to work and, and push it as fast as the train can go. But yet, when residents have issues of, of grave concern and fairness, it begins to be a problem. I still want to recommend to us to understand the purpose of move to work. I heard the generalization of it, but it's not the spirit of what move to work was. When it's something in it for residents. And that's the leverage that has been given to, for us to participate in this demonstration project for over twenty-one years. We are now, when residents come up with a lively, very well resident-driven resolution. That was even put to this board. We didn't get the leverage or the understanding, and I kept hearing the word fair. What's unfair is that our, uh, our weight and our recommendations have no say. And we can't continue to go there. We cannot continue to allow this housing authority who are stores over our lives. And I'm going to say it like that. To continue to railroad us on a constant basis. That was not a hard way to go with the proposals that were said, and I must commend Chairperson Buzzy. If I'm saying your name wrong, Deion, I apologize. I want to commend her on trying to keep us on track. And keep, keep us away from the feel-good stuff about feelings about one person as a, as, as objective. We have all these other residents. Again, I'm going to say that this housing authority is showing a very embarrassing show. For you to allow an election to go on with one person on the ballot. And then give leeway to an independent who didn't have the common courtesy to come to leadership. We're honored leaders. And we're honored in the sense that our, 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 what we say matters. I know that. Shame on you all for voting in a manner that would be against the, the very people that you all are hired to serve. I am a little upset, but I'm not going to be disrespectful, but I will be free to say what I'm saying. The history of move to work never meant for us to be in this spot. Move to work gave us the ability to relax regulations that we basically had as barriers. This was a barrier as far as this election is concerned, and it was a communication barrier. I will tell you, it was on purpose. But we will not do this anymore. We as residents and resident leaders, we, we go through these processes and we are constantly there as a door, a door marker, actually speaking. Because when we come up and we speak up, there's nobody. Uh, I have to refer once more back to Commissioner Van Goshery. Every point that she raised did not stimulate anybody on this commission to even consider the Housing Trust Fund. It didn't do us anything to consider all of the other options that we have. We have a very healthy housing trust fund that I was told nobody knows how to use the money. We need to learn. Shame on us. Thank you very much.
Ms. Settles. Amra.
Uh, next is signed up is Abina Disro. But I don't think I see her. Then next we have is, uh, Mr. Umar.
For this twenty oh three move to work plan program. Like I said, I agree with this, the, with Commissioner, I mean, I agree with, uh, Karen Settles. Chair Karen Settles and Ms. Van Goshery. I, I, I agree with them and I'm totally, I'm totally, and you know I really could go off, but I'm not, I'm a laughing child. I'm totally disappointed in all y'all, except a few of you. I'm not going to name a name, but a few of you, because I don't want nobody to feel like I'm picking somebody out. But I'm totally disappointed with this board, with you all, except a few. Like I said, and I want this in document, in record, we are totally. We are not going to keep going for this. We are not. And it's sad. To look like her. But trust and believe. Because you act like you can't hear me. And it's sad how y'all doing us. And you all work for us. You get paid to work to serve us. And it is pathetic. And you wonder why we go over. Or we act out of nature with you all, because it is sad. It is pathetic over and over again. Every time we try to, every time we try to come to y'all and play fair. This is what we get. Kick, stomp out. Like it's nothing, like Ms. Hoffman, she railroaded the mess out of us. She completed, let that lady on the board. It's cool though. It's cool. And that's all I got to say for any of y'all. I'm disappointed in y'all. For y'all to be the new leadership of us, I am totally disappointed. And y'all know I can get the acting out of my nature, but I'm not, I'm laughing at you. Because the Creator got y'all. And it ain't over, because the Creator got y'all. And it's sad for y'all to treat us like this. Much as we try, you still put your, kick us down. And I'm through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr..
Next on the list, we have Ms. Pat Malloy.
Good afternoon, all. I did have a testimony prepared. But I feel. It's no use for me reading it or telling the concerns for Lincoln Heights and some of the other property. Because nothing is going to be done. I feel that we're just a laughing stock. There are other ways for me to get my point across. To every commissioner, to every D C H A staff that's on this line. You need, you need to realize. What goes around comes around. You're going to need me, you're going to need us. And we. Are going to turn our back. And say, God forbid. The only thing I can say is, D C H A. It's time to organize, it's time to regroup. It's time to speaker and speak out. There are ways that we can get our point across. I love you all. But God forbid. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Malloy.
And the next person is Ms. Patricia Bishop.
Good afternoon, everyone. I did have something to say written out, but I'm not going to do it. The level of stress that y'all fail to realize that we as presidents, we as tenants, we as stakeholders is under. With this pandemic, your decisions, your secrets, your wannabe. Tools of my definitions, I can read very well. And my explanation and definition of what y'all trying to do, it is not for the thirty percent. It is not for the fifty percent. Y'all want to move forward with gentrification, redevelopment and neglect, once again. Of everything I have said in the past, present and future. I am here, once again, asking you to get in this good trouble with me. And to quote Dr. Martin Luther King, the time is always right to do what is right for the people. Because our lives have been in jeopardy for years with this stealing of the money. To the disrespect of the living conditions, to the retaliation. That we continue to receive day in and day out, under the old, the new and the future. Please stop it.
Ms. Bishop. Ms. Bishop.
My testimony and thank you very much for once again, hearing what I have to say. And make it work.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
And Ms. Blackson was having some internet issues, but she is interested in testifying and that will be our final testimony.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to share that I am, you know, as I said in my past testimony, I'm not in support of the resolution twenty two oh three. I'm definitely in agreement with all who've spoken before me, starting with Commissioner Van Goshry. To Chair Settles and the rest of the elected presidents. I just want to say, you know, as I stated. Housing does what works for housing. It's not for the residents, as far as I can see. You know, from what I've seen over these years, being a resident since nineteen ninety six. That the housing authority has no respect for the residents of the DCHA properties. You know, for any commissioner to sit on the board and show a facial expression of laughing. While people are testifying or giving their points, that's a sign of disrespect. You've already belittled us in so many ways. Why would you sit there and laugh actually in the camera? While people are giving their testimony? Come on, there has to be some level of respect. You want us to get on here and you want us to be respectful of all people. Because it's the human rights, you know, humanly possible thing to do. Why would you laugh while everyone is testimony, giving their testimony? I find that a great sign of disrespect and you all have no respect for us. And I believe as 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 shared prior, that everyone should have been allowed to get on that board. As I stated before, on the election process for commissioners. As I stated before, there was not a clear understanding. And if I hand you one of my business cards for my agency right now and say that I'm an advocate for utilities. A resident and a definitely a senior can be misinformed that I'm a representative for all utilities, right? The same way a representative that get any person that's running for an election, it goes out and pass out a business card with the same information on. And you ought to consider that not campaigning? Something has to be wrong with that picture. Don't do what works for housing. Do what works for the people, because the only reason everyone's employed with these positions is because we live in these houses. Because we live on these public housing properties. So please have some respect for us. If you don't have any respect for us, you don't have to laugh in our face like, hey, what you're saying doesn't even count. I find that a very, very sign of disrespect. And it shouldn't be allowed for you to sit on that camera and laugh when everyone gives their testimony. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Blackson.
There are no further witnesses.
Hammer, do you have our next date for February for Board of Commissioners?
Yes, it's Wednesday, February ninth.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for participating in our special meeting today.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I want to say something about twenty two oh three. I got one question. Why is, and I want it, I want it for the record, please, and in a minute. Why is only one candidate named? Now I want to say it correctly. From what I understand is that the candidates in this particular election. Had to have so many names on the petition. That does not make you. Um, the commissioner. It's no different than when the mayor, ANC commissioners. In the city council, they want your name, they have a petition. And that petition is only for me to get my name on the petition. Which means that Ken Council is not going to vote for Aquarius. But Ken Council can sign my petition only to get my name on the ballot.
Yep.
Correct?
Yes.
Now. From what I'm understanding, because you know, I came in late. So therefore I am under the impression that only one candidate. She met the, he or she, it was a she, Ms. Parker, I'm a call names. So from what I understand, Ms. Parker is the only candidate that actually went out. Whatever the rules was, and she was successful. Yes or no? Is she the only person? Yes. Okay, and this is not a discriminatory count of question, but I want to know this. So she read some rules. She is the only person that understood the rules and she went out during the pandemic. And she got all these names, but Ms. And I want to say your name right today, because I say it always wrong. Ms. Blackson.
Yes, Ms. Blackson.
I said it right today. Ms. Blackson, you said something to me that was different. You explained to me in for the minutes, what did you meant when you said, who had a business card? Did this, did this candidate have a business card?
Yes, she passed out a business card to residents that says that she's a senior disabled advocate. And that can be very misleading when you approach a senior's door and you're going door to door and you pass out a card. And it says that I'm an advocate for seniors. And that way they could have been misled thinking they had to sign her petition. She shared some information. She says she's their advocate and that's how it went. We have another person who actually is running as a candidate, that she came to his very property and said it to him directly. But I've heard the other, heard from other people that says she came on their properties. And she was campaigning actually from the information that was given. In that same very packet that was given to us, it said that you, and 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 I do take it that I'm a little educated. It reads, if you campaign prior to the twenty first of January. That you could be considered disqualified. That was my understanding and everything is not understood clearly. That's why I asked Mr. Scott and all Mr. Scott sent me as a third party monitor. Was he copied and paste the same information back to me that the package say? He did not give a clear and understanding of what that exactly meant. Because other people asked me to come to their property and share who I was for they can know me for those who didn't. But I told them I could not because I could not campaign. Because it was not a clear understanding. This lady passed out a card that said it had all her information and contact information. That states that she's a senior and disabled advocate. That is very misleading. She didn't, she she shouldn't have been able to do that. That shouldn't have been allowed. And Mr. Scott, as a hired third party, who's probably paid with the money that's for residents. Actually did not give me a clear understanding and I have the email. I have the email, so it's not clearly stated. I have a hundred and forty something of signatures myself. And it was told that it will, the signatures will be relaxed. I'm sure I probably could have gotten more signatures because I couldn't get around all the properties. I do, I do work also. But they want to use the excuse that the pandemic is going on when it applies to the housing authority. But they won't want to say the pandemic is going on when it applies to the residents. The same housing authority that was closed from the first week of January through the end of January. And we received them letters during the time that we're supposed to go out here and vote. Get petitions for, our name can just go on an actual ballot, which makes no sense. Because that don't even mean that's the count of people that you're going to get to vote when it's an election. Let's be, let's have, have some sense around here about the whole situation. All the names should have went on the ballot. And let the people pick.
Okay, with that said, let me say this and Karen Settles is a witness to this. Here's the history that gets to go in a minute. The original Board of Commissioners came in place under receivership and there was no votes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
That was the original under David Gilmore. The next group of commissioners, there was election. This is to be put in record. I personally was Commissioner Jacqueline West.
Yep.
Campaign manager.
Yep.
And Karen Settles worked on that campaign. And on our campaign, we had to go to different properties and they, we too had to get signatures. To place the candidate on the ballot. I don't know what property I sent Karen to, but I know I did award six because I wanted to do Hopkins. I did side facts, James Creek, and I got stuck in Capers for some.
Capers, yeah.
Everybody, I gave each, each, each person had a board to get these numbers. That was the first thing. Okay, so that's how that ballot was set. And I, and when I myself campaigned, the reason why everybody know me. I just came from chemo. Karen Settles know this. And I campaigned in every one of these properties and put flyers on the door. And every property manager called the director and said Aquarius need to put, stop putting, when it just now. It's putting these flyers on these doors is a mess. Now, when I campaigned. There's two things and Ms. Blackman is right about one. Now, one thing we did not have to do. We did not, when I campaigned, we did not have to go from property to property to get signatures. That got cut out by the time I came along. So I didn't explain three different campaign models to you. One, with the original commissioners. And do we have any living? And I've always said this, but nobody, and I've asked the citywide advisory board to do it. I tried to do it on the committee level. I've always asked for Geneva Bob to be speak. Because Geneva Bob knows the history. Okay, so, but that's when I, okay, so. The campaign and getting your name on the ballot, I didn't, we didn't have to get our name on the ballot. Now, if you want respect as a state, because the District of Columbia now want to be a state. In every state in the United States of America, they have this process that y'all want to eliminate. And remember, you are not a state now. You're only a municipal corporation.
Thank you.
Every state in the United States are chartered. Which make them a nonprofit corporation and they're municipal too, but they are a state. I put law, black law one on one on Facebook and I tagged every resident. Who is my Facebook friend and asked y'all to study it, because I had to go back to school. Because I learned about that. When I was probably in high school and it didn't remember it no more, but I'm going through tapes. And Mr. Jai Hill, who is one of my coaches, coached me back there. And when he gave it to me, I put it on Facebook to tag each and every one of y'all so y'all can understand what a contract is. So at that point. What I'm going to recommend and you all not going to like me. Because one thing I do, I heard very well when Ms. Blackman said. That when she went around to get names on her petition. She gave people her business card. That's one thing. Somebody legally need to look into that. Now, the third party monitor. He's a lawyer and he would have did what I did. What he did was ditto back to you. Because they met with a group of people and it wasn't us. To crack. How to do this election during the pandemic. Look at what you asked for. What I did was went back and told this board and every commissioner except the new commissioners. I told Alethea to send the minutes and the tape. When I asked the citywide advisory board that let's move through, let's move forward with the election during the pandemic. And that way the Board of Commissioners election will be on time. Nobody, and this is the truth, nobody understood my communication and as y'all are know.
We understood it. We understood it.
Okay, and then after that happened, what happened next was we pushed back. The resident council election now and and and. Vice Chair Counsel would tell you I said this. I said, my recommendation, since they pushed back, we shouldn't even have a commissioner election until October. Because if you wait till October to have the commissioner election. That would give the citywide advisory board the opportunity to get educated, informed accurately. And we wouldn't have this problem. Because the citywide advisory board should have been educated on how the original board got elected. How we first had the election and how we first had a third election. All of them should have been fighting it out. Then they would have came back to the board and they would have said, this is the recommendation of how we going to have.
That's what we did. We did do that.
Now, once they did that, what happened, Karen Settles?
What happened is the board, they twisted the whole thing up. And let me just tell you for the record. The truth is, is that the housing authority with our present state and the trouble that we in. In order to do the right kind of damage control, you've got four people only that signed up. To even run in any one of those slots. It, what is the hard job of putting all those folks on the ballot? That wasn't no hard decision and it should never have been debated because it's only right. It ain't got shit to do with faith. Excuse my expression. I apologize.
You know what, Karen? Let me interject there. And this is what I also asked. I told them in this process, I wanted Attorney Marks to play a role with y'all. No, no come and no disrespect to you, Commissioner Counsel. I wanted you not to even be there because you also sits on the board, on the board of commissioners.
You're correct.
Okay, and so an only person that should have been there was Attorney Marks. Even though he only represent us in bylaws, he is law firm, D L Piper would have said. Karen Settles, I'm watching that be, we are unable to. Do the request that Commissioner Van Goshry requested because the contract that we have with the housing authorities only for your bylaws. Then Karen Settles should have been able, but I don't even, she probably only, no, I wanted this. Then Karen Settles would have been able to find an attorney. And that attorney would have educated. The citywide advisory board are still about the three left action. And today Karen Settles would have been sitting at this emergency meeting with a attorney. That the citywide advisory board has picked, selected. And I think we need to go back there. My recommendation is going to be that we squash this, the citywide, the. Commissioners election probably shouldn't be until October. That's one. Allow Karen Settles and them to go back to the drawing board and the seventy one. He said, Ms., is to get an attorney. And the citywide advisory board who's in place right now. Is to be educated and put in writing and submit to the board as a full. What their recommendation is.
I concur with that. I concur with that. Let me just say for the, for the record, let me say this for the record. The, the fact that the equity or the inequity that's been, been bullied. And and done in this process is not acceptable in the first place. But let me be real clear. We have attorneys holding an election. And we have options as far as having attorneys. Yes, we do. Your, your recommendations are very correct. And the fact is, is that a board resolution, we didn't even know they were going to do a resolution. We found out they did. So I'm not saying we didn't have time. We had time to make a presentation, but we were told we were too late. I was told to come before the board for the regular commission meeting. To ask for a, um, an extension. That's exactly what I was told to do. That's exactly what I did. But when you're being misled and then the rules change or are flexible for other people's purpose. Why are we not understanding the embarrassment that we're putting on not only the staff at eleven thirty three, our director. But also the residents to have only four people to sign up to vote. And then only one qualified. So that leaves the independent third party in a very conducive position. To take in charge of two times as opposed to one. How dare you play on our intelligence that way?
Ms. Settles.
I concur with you.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Settles. I, I hear everything that both have said and it's on record. But we have to complete our task, which is to get to our next meeting. But everything's been recorded. So I guess you would just move accordingly. I want to thank everybody for showing up. Our next February board meeting of commissioners meeting is at one P M. February ninth. Everybody be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
You too.
Lord of stress level, pray and fall.
God is the greatest, he prevail over all this.
Yes, he is.
God, I'm telling you.
Trust and believe that, y'all think it's a joke.
We do. We do. You know who.